Get started. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thanks for having us.
You're welcome. It's nice to have you here.
Oh, are we turning on?
Yeah, I did turn on. Has everybody's mic turned on? All right, we're, the manifest is passing through us here. Were there any questions on the manifest? Anybody know? We need a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of September 11th and the public minutes of September 16th.
We'll approve the minutes.
Hold on a second.
Any discussion on those? I didn't see anything either. Other than the, the, what was it? The staff handbook, we actually do need to approve. So we'll do that under other business, just FYI. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Citizens' comments? Is there anybody in the room that has any comments at this point in time? Don't see anybody online, right, Maria?
No, not yet.
Okay. Um, student presentation. We'd like to welcome Kaylee Howe as our student rep to the board. Thank you for joining us. She apparently, along with Karen, has a student presentation for ELO. That's on the agenda.
Okay, so presentation is misleading because I'm just talking. I couldn't get Canva to work today. Yeah, it won't let me add any pictures, but...
So maybe we'll add it to next month's agenda then, if you want. Okay?
Yeah, I reckon I have pictures.
She was just gonna have some pictures rolling, right?
Yeah.
Was there anything you wanted to say about it today, or?
I can talk about it. I do an ELO with the Rattler reformer, and I follow around Chris Ratter. He's the photographer, and Bob Odette, he's like a journalist. I just got to walk across the bridge today, the new one. It was pretty fun. I got to talk to the, I don't even remember his name. We've never actually got properly introduced. The guy in charge of it with Read and Read. We learned a bunch of stuff. We were watching them take the temporary bridge apart, which is really cool. They have poles, they go like 180 feet down in the ground. And he was teaching me all about, they have like an island and stuff. But I pretty much follow these two guys around. We report on accidents, we report on the football games, sports events. I go and I interview a lot of authors with Bob Odette at the works. But I've learned a lot about, like, just around the town locally. How to talk to people, how to like communicate, even if there might be a difference. And yeah, it's a lot of fun. I do it all the time. I get emails from them, and it might be like 6:30 at night, and there's a four-car pileup on Route 9. And we go and we report on it. So it's not just during the hours of school that I'm learning stuff. It's like outside of school, and it's stuff that like I can use in my career when I graduate from Hinsdale, and I can use in everyday life. Yeah.
Cool, thanks. I look forward to seeing the pictures.
I know, it's exciting.
Any questions for Kaylee?
We got it right yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not that brave. Yeah, tomorrow I'm gonna go. Tomorrow I'm going to help them. They're gonna show me the process of actually putting together the paper, and kind of how they choose what does make the cover. Yeah, that'll be a lot of fun. And then this weekend, I'm doing two football games.
So you gotta cover both of them as like a stringer?
Yep.
Write up a small article about the games?
I don't know if I'm getting ready a small article. It's more the pictures part of it.
Photography.
Yep.
Yeah, that would be fun.
It is a lot of fun. I covered the Keene-Rattler homecoming game, and that was, that was a lot of fun.
Are you still thinking about doing the homeless?
Oh, yeah, I'm doing, my project is on, it's like photo collection, I guess you could describe it, on homeless people and like kind of humanizing them. So we're gonna go around and interview different homeless people, and then do portrait photography. And then my end goal is to create a gallery walk that will display here, and then the reformer wants to display in other galleries.
Cool.
That's a great idea.
Nice.
Any other questions?
I wanted to let you ensure, Pete, they've told you about being a student rep on the school board position. You are a member of the school board. While you can't vote, you can ask questions anytime, and if you have a question on anything, you know, if you have something to say, you know, definitely get my attention, and we'll, you know, let you say it. So don't be afraid. Okay? Excellent. So next, we have, did you have anything to bring to the board today? Not yet, it's the first day, no pressure. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a, there were a few items in there, although a lot of items in the report that I submitted. And there were some links as well that you could click. The first, I think that that's most important to us, is that the High School Selection Committee in Winchester sent their letter of interest to the five school districts we talked about in our last meeting. They did receive a positive response from three. The first to respond was Hinsdale, Manadok Regional, and Pioneer Valley. So Pioneer Valley has also responded to an invitation to attend a high school fair, so to speak, in November at Winchester School. That's a night where three, the three schools will come and present in different rooms, and people will rotate between those presentations of what's, you know, basically what's the school all about, student representatives kind of bragging about what's going on in the school. People can ask questions about the presentation, about the specific school district and what they can get out of it. At the end of October, prior to this high school fair, there'll be a public forum as well in Winchester for parents and community members to come. There'll be a town hall on October 30th at 6 o'clock. There'll be a short program, and then people will be able to kind of talk to the school board and the selection committee about what they're looking for in a new high school, in a new high school experience. So that's gonna be one of the information gathering sessions. The next would be, I think, in either mid-December or early January, because in order to have an article on the 2025 warrant, that would have to be done close to the end of January. So this would be on the March warrant for voting in the town of Winchester, which would then be for an anchor high school, which would then take the following year, the '25 to '26, for the receiving district, as well as the sending district, to build the appropriate budget. And then the first year that students would attend the anchor high school in full would be the '26 to '27. Because in 2027, the tuition contract with Keene High School sunsets.
So I'm sorry, I was writing, if students would come into a school, the '27, '28, or '26?
'26, '27. Now, there is a caveat with the current addendum to the tuition contract about what's the transition look like for students who are enrolling at Keene High School now and next year, and the year after. Once there's an anchor school, does that mean that the students can no longer finish at Keene? Or can they? That's the part that's still being ironed out, that we hope is wrapped up within the next couple of weeks with the Keene School Board, as well as the Winchester School Board. So Ms. Roth and I have had a conversation. I believe that that is going to be a yes from Hinsdale to come and present at the high school fair, put on the dot. Pioneer Valley has also said that they would come, and we're just waiting to hear back from them. Like, I suspect that they're gonna wanna come as well. So that'll give Winchester families a really good opportunity to kind of revolve around, see what's out there. That would be the update for Winchester.
Are we gonna be doing anything for any of those meetings, like school board buys?
Not for this particular piece, but as I would imagine if, so with my Winchester hat on, that would then be a discussion of what would an anchor school contract cost look like in '26, '27? Because this board would want to approve that and be a part of whatever that negotiation is, if you're chosen as the anchor high school. Same with Manadok, same as Pioneer Valley. So really, it would come down to whether or not you, at any point, any of the receiving boards, the interested boards, can stop and vote and say, you know, I really don't think this is a good idea, before it becomes a warrant article. So the board always has the authority to step in and say, hold on, maybe we're not gonna vote for that. So there's that activity. If they choose to, and it's selected as an anchor school, obviously that would be a lot of work with the tuition contract and the development of that. My recommendation as the Hinsdale superintendent would be we have a local council that helps negotiate that. That's not something that we wanna fool around with, especially if it's gonna be a long-term contract. Okay? For both of those events, October 30th and November 17th, I will not be present, because there is certainly a conflict of interest. And we don't wanna muddy up the process by having the superintendent of the two districts. It's not fair to, Manadok, nor is it fair to Pioneer Valley. So my job is to communicate, do background work, organize, and let the selection committee and the boards do whatever is necessary. So everything that I'm sharing with you is all public information. It's in the minutes of a school board meeting in Winchester. So I might give away any secrets. You see a strategic planning update there. That was most recently sent out. There were a couple of meetings that were held. I know the facilities, finance facilities group couldn't meet, and I had not yet heard back from, I think, the community relations group. I've not heard back from the chair yet, so I imagine, I think Mark's on that group, but he's not present tonight, so I can't ask him, I can't recall. Is anyone on the community relations group? So I'll have that update for us as soon as I can get it. But they are meeting, the work is being done. We sent out the resources. It's really going.
It's going.
Yeah.
You have the bravely full-day visit update. That was helpful. We had another meeting yesterday with the bravely team, still moving forward with our vision for middle school redesign, trying to get more student-centered and experiential learning for middle school students. So that discussion is taking place within the bravely team. And our next step is we have some homework to do for that group, and to obviously communicate about the work that we've been discussing and meeting on, as facilitated by next-generation learning. And there are a few more items in here. Campus security, Wayne was there, principals were there. We had several stakeholders there. Our next meeting is November 19th at 8:30. We have a gentleman coming who specializes in school security, who's a colleague of mine, who's gonna share his background on how the school district where he's working got to its level of safety and security, and where they started, and what they did to get there, and talk about a specific protocol that we may wanna follow. That's gonna be for the security team meeting, more of an information session, question and answer for him. Budget planning, that, I'm not gonna steal James Thunder. Just gonna say that we've been meeting with program managers. That work is ongoing. It's going well, but this is the easy part. So we all recognize that. It's also really easy when we don't have any increases, when we're in a collective bargaining year, so there aren't any increases in the draft budget, because that, any increase would be in a separate article based on a collective bargaining scheme. So hard part comes later, when we need to begin to trim down and work with the budget committee on what's gonna be a reasonably fiscal, reasonable fiscally responsible budget. Some recommendations, and I was hoping for some conversation around this. If you'd had the opportunity to review the report, I recommended some changes to our school board committee list, three that I'm suggesting that perhaps be put aside unless there are reasons why the board would like to continue with them, is the Behavioral Support Committee, the Portrait of a Learner Committee, and Staff Development Committee. In exchange, would like to have a Strategic Planning Committee, which to me would make a heck of a lot of sense. With the chair and the vice chair, as part of the steering committee, they would easily represent, from the board perspective, that committee have a deeper hand in all of the work that's taking place. What's nice, too, is that we have individual board members on those teams. So it's gonna be a well-informed board, so it'll have that level of organization so that when you come back in May for the board to approve the strategic plan, it's gonna be pretty well-known among all five board members. Because my expectation is that all five of these board members will be here after March.
I'm the only one.
Right, April?
I'm hoping.
Okay. And... So it would, it would certainly help with that process. So I didn't know what your thoughts were about the recommendation of, you know, just shelving those three committees. I think at a time, particularly the Behavioral Support Committee, there was a time when the board really wanted to drill down to what's happening in our schools. I'm not certain that's where the board is today, although we still provide information. We still provide information, certainly on our staff development project. But as far as Portrait of a Learner, the bulk of that work is done. And now we've taken that to a new level, with the internal work with the bravery program, as well as getting students to define those five skills for us, so.
Does anybody have an opinion, or I can speak to it first if somebody knows?
Just the behavior committee, it was, so I think the reason that committee started was the lack of consistency throughout the district, and just behaviors were, we were having a lot of trouble when the committee was originally created. I am a little hesitant to get rid of it completely, but I think maybe having a report about behavior specifically, then if we're not gonna have that committee, because that's, a lot of that was going through, you know, referrals, and like that was the original charge, was looking at how things are being handled, and trying to, you know, have like a standard operating procedure, basically, for each thing. And if that's being handled, that's fine, but I think definitely having a report about what's going on in the schools is important.
Would you want that monthly or quarterly?
I think quarterly is probably best. I guess we could also leave that up to...
Yeah, because they're giving us the, they're giving us the...
The overview.
Yeah, that's what, it's really being reported or whatever, but then if we can get it a little more in-depth with it, that might be...
Probably easier quarterly to have a bulk set of data.
Yeah, I was, I was, as long as we're getting information on those. I haven't been on the, my only hesitation was also the behavior. I've never been on that committee, but I know how important it was at the time when it was, when it was made. And then I was gonna actually suggest that we put the new committee on, the Strategic Planning Committee on there this month anyway, so that works out perfectly. And I'm fine, there's not, I've been on staff development. There's not much that comes from the board in that committee, let's be honest.
Yeah, it's really...
It's just in getting information of what's gonna be, you know, done. And we get that in the reports when they come up. Anyway, I feel like, and, you know, Portrait of a Learner, if it's done, then there's no reason to have it there anymore. So, does anybody else have any comments, thoughts?
Um, I would hate to see the behavioral committee go. I think that we're in a transition right now, and I think it's important for it to stay, just so that we have the... I think at least seeing it through this year, while we're in this big transition, and seeing how we are at the end, and if it's needed then.
But is everybody... To the next year?
Yeah, but if everybody is for it to go, then it's for it to go. But I would like to see it stay through this year.
Yeah, I'm definitely hesitant, but the members, I think, are... Well, in the original, it kind of had shifted, because I don't really know why it shifted, but it definitely, from originally when I was on it to now, it definitely is a different committee than it was. So I, and it is more an SEL focus now. And I think, especially at the elementary school, that's sort of, and I think the people on it, the focus is SEL. So I think we've sort of shifted away from its intended purpose. So I don't know if it should be restructured or just dropped completely or what, but it definitely had shifted focus.
What, so this is a question of mine, that I've wondered, about two questions, really. Was it instituted by the board because there wasn't consistent application from the SAU office and the principal's offices in the administration of consequences for discipline?
There was a rise, there was a rise in, in activity, you know, in behavioral. And I think it was formed to try to figure out, well, like, wait...
I think some members were focusing on consequences, and some were focused on more like causation. But it was definitely, there was work needed to be done.
And then the second one is, what would take place during committee meetings? Like, what was an agenda, what would that look like?
Originally, it was reviewing things like referrals, and especially ones that included violence, and just looking at behavioral data, and we, and how it's reported, and, you know, what should be reported. And I think at the high school level, the focus was getting some consistency so kids knew what to expect, you know, in any room. This is consequence-wise, and this is what's gonna happen. The committee had since shifted to more focusing on, I think, the work with Eric Mann, too, sort of. You know, we shifted to focusing on SEL, and he's done a lot of great work over at the elementary school, but it definitely shifted the purpose of the committee.
So the, I guess, board members reviewing referrals with student-identified information and their student personal information in there?
It was, sorry, I missed, yeah, it wasn't even the actual referrals. Like, I think it was originally Joe and Ann pre-tagged, but they would summarize referral data. So we weren't looking at, and if, I think there were a couple that were brought in, but it was redacted. We never knew.
Makes you feel a lot better.
Yeah, we never knew the details like that. Yeah, no, 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 we were not looking that in-depth.
More just like them carries by like violence, or like being kicked out, or coming in late, or...
And like property damage, and just, you know, the different types of referrals they were seeing.
What point during the day the transitions were hard?
And we're not trying to prevent information, because we would provide information on all three of these topics anyway to the board, just trying to make your lives a little more efficient.
I know, I'm on all three of those.
I mean, I'm okay with it, I just, I just don't want it to like disappear to the, I feel like if, if we're getting it, then there's some level of accountability where it's still there, and being monitored, and kept in the, on the forefront, I guess you'd say. And I just wanna make sure that, as a parent, I know you hear talk, and you know that things aren't always wonderful, and there are still problems going on. So just to make sure that the teachers are being heard, that they're being respected. Because I think a big problem was, in the beginning of these, is that, this issue is that the teachers are giving discipline, and then they're being sent to the office, and the discipline wasn't being followed through, and teachers were not feeling heard or respected. And I think, like, for me, mostly, like, my main concern's always that the teachers are feeling secure in their jobs, and that comes in all forms, like, and I think this is a huge piece for them, is making sure that behaviors are under control, and when they're not, they're not, their opinions are listened to and heard, and their classrooms are running as smooth as possible. I just wanna make sure that we're still...
Backing them up.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, yeah, backing them up, yeah.
The support is still there.
Right, yeah. So I think, I feel like if we, if we can get that information in a quarterly report, I think would be okay, if everybody's okay with that. I mean, we could put it off a year, it's all to you guys, you know what I mean? I don't, I've never been on that committee, so I don't really know.
I think the way it sort of shifted, and especially at the elementary school level, like Sarah Donahue has such a hold on the SEL, like, they have that down. And that was sort of how we had shifted, so it kind of felt like, okay, you can update us on what you're doing now. You know, like, we'd like to hear what you're doing, and what's happening, and the morning shift, and... But I think, yeah, if we're not gonna restructure it, then just the report is sufficient.
Can I ask the principals if they're down with that?
Sure.
Would you guys be able to, at least from the behavioral support piece?
Absolutely. I put some, like, basic disciplinary data in my current board report, and I wanted to ask if that was what you were looking for. But I'm happy to give more detailed information. I was just showing Molly, we adopted a platform for teachers to send discipline referrals, and it organizes it in all different ways. I can sort it by grade, gender, day of the week, place in the school, type of offense. So I can show you all sorts of pretty graphs of what's going on. So I'm happy to provide that information quarterly.
Yeah, what you provided in the report for, like, this month, is generally what we've been getting for quarterly reports, with the numbers, and what type of referrals there have been, and that kind of thing. And then how many of those were like re-referrals, you know what I mean, have been multiples?
Yep.
So, I mean, that, that information is all great, but I think if we could get, I think if we can get, like, I would love a graph. You know what I mean? Like, give me a graph, you know? More information, more data, that would be, I would, I would be fine with that, yeah.
I know, I'm just curious about, like,...
I know, yeah, exactly.
And I'm like, okay, we don't have to get...
Yeah, we don't...
That's very cool that you can do that.
Yeah, the previous system that was in place that I arrived to was outdated and clunky, and had a lot of opportunities for information to get lost, and it made me nervous, so. And that's the system I have. Yeah. Getting lost right now, so I didn't know, you would talk about that this summer, I didn't know you got it. So, um, so we'll have to talk about that. But, um, so the work's being done. I think that's the, like, I wanna make sure you guys know that. So we prioritized through title grants to one of our core PLCs is MTSSB, so the behavioral side of it, which was the SEL group, and now has morphed into this co-led by myself and Sarah Don, who's, we're getting that off the ground. So we're, we're meeting on all of these, actually, we dedicated, we split, divided up yesterday a faculty meeting, and the support team, those of us who get calls, we met, because we are like, there is, there's parts that aren't parting right now. And so I think we have all the things, we have a lot of good structures in place, but that cohesive piece, like you were talking about, like, we're, we're having paper, like, and so it's like paper officer referrals that I make it four days later, which is not anybody's, like, fault, that just is, right? Like, so, but then, what do I, you know, just developmentally, a kindergartner, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, like, so, and that's not always true. Or we're responding to things, and then not having that paper follow-up. So like, that's a thing we're working on right now actively, to try and get all that together. So we're using what you described as the one key, is through our power school. And so, yeah, I think this is another opportunity to align the buildings. So the work is definitely being done. We're debriefing issues, we're going all through it. So I think, I think the feedback and concern was, because we're doing so much work on it right now, to have another meeting felt like it would take away from the work, right? Like, so it was just, that was some of that when Maria went to schedule it.
Yeah, so Karen, in terms of staff development and between...
Well, I think we're gonna be doing this, working on a professional master plan.
That's right.
Reporting out on that anyways, you're gonna get that information. And even the Portrait of a Learner work, even though the board work is done, and the work continues, and I try to update that in my monthly report, and it's lower after that. So I think you'll get all that information without having to...
Three meetings, start. Deal.
So...
I know, all right, so two.
So are we, is everybody comfortable with having one motion to take those three off and add the...
Yeah, I think that makes sense, streamline.
Right. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so I just need a motion to do that?
I can make a motion, it feels self-fulfilling, though, so...
I don't wanna make a motion for any more committees, to be completely honest. We've got some busy ones ahead of us. But I'll make a motion to alter the committee that we had and start up the... alter the committee that we had and start up the strategic planning committee.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you. The last item I had is a reminder to the board, but also just information that'll be at the college board forum. Uh, October 20th to the 23rd, um, I've been asked to talk about the AP rural network that we're building with North Country folks uh, as well as meet with some local school districts in Texas who are expanding their AP work in a rural community as well. Texas Rural, New Hampshire Rural, we all know that. So we have a lot to learn from them. So I'm kinda eager to be able to get out there get my boots dusty and see how they're doing at uh, the Baseline. So um, with that, I'd take any questions with my report. Otherwise, that concludes it.
I'm looking forward to getting the bravery data. Being part of the, being part of one of the discussion groups is interesting. So I'm, I'm here, I'm hopeful to see what they all come up with, you know?
For November.
Yeah.
How's that? We'll make that part of the report.
That would be great.
And I just wanted, so you brought up AP classes and this is sort of a parent hat question, I think, but so my daughter's taking AP psych and I didn't realize if, if you don't take the AP exam, you don't get the college credit, but there is like nowhere in New Hampshire to take an AP psych exam. And if we're offering AP classes, should we also offer the exam on site?
So we don't, uh, we don't teach AP psych here?
But the other AP classes, right? Do we do the exams for the AP classes?
We do. And you wanna talk about that?
Sure, yeah, we've been talking about this a lot the last couple of days. So currently, we don't require students to take the test, so it's optional.
Right.
Um, and so they pay for it themselves. The college board does offer fee waivers for students if they qualify for free and reduced lunch. Um, what David and I have been talking about is the idea of if we're gonna offer the course um, and have our students take it, requiring them to take the test, um, in which case we will pay for everyone's test. Um, so obviously we need to budget for that. Um, and that's a conversation that we had today, but um, just trying to increase the rigor because I know myself, I took AP classes in high school and I didn't take the test and that was not wasted time, but like I could have gotten more out of it if I had taken the test. So.
And I didn't realize you don't get college credit unless you take the exam. So I think that's a lot of.
Higher.
Right. And a lot of parents are like, oh, well, they took an AP class and they didn't even get college credit. I'm like, I bet they didn't take the test. So that piece, just making sure everyone understands that.
Aware of that, yeah, it's important.
Anything else for Dr. Ryan? Alright, thank you, Dr. Ryan.
Thank you.
Uh, business administrators report.
Let me chair members of the board. That was three, so maybe fewer questions.
Silly girl.
Um, I did want to say that um, we are, we have just one more uh, meeting for the budget. Um, initial process meeting, um, a lot of homework for, for me and others, but uh, we'll be coming together as a team soon to start discussing that. Next step will be the board.
So when do you um foresee us being, having our first look at it? Estimated. I was gonna ask anyway.
It was coming.
It was coming.
Um, mine's just scheduled.
Already in October.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
Sounds about their first hearing.
Yeah, the town is always first.
Yeah, that doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to say by end of November. We need, because Thanksgiving is kind of like, seems to be a week early, so that next week gives us like four weeks until Christmas. So if we can have our first look at that point and it's.
At the end of November?
Oh, that's, that's late.
Yeah, that is way late.
Really?
Yeah. We generally.
I feel like usually we look at it in October.
At the end of October. Generally, at least a first look. Because by, by November, we're having meetings with the budget committee.
Yeah, so we need to have a good handle on it.
They generally, I gen- they'll, well, we're generally giving the, the budget committee the, the budget right before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Wow. I'm used to districts that actually, they're meeting ahead of yours that don't.
Oh, no, we.
No, because then, because then it's like December, meeting with the budget committee. And then if we have to, beginning of January.
I would prefer you guys set the date and we need the date.
So.
Let's look at our calendar.
Yokee.
Yeah.
But you have to realize a lot of the work that we've done like through September is waiting for them.
Right. Which is generally why we get it to the end of October.
And then it comes up to us for first review. And then we meet together as a whole team. So everybody can see what everybody wants.
Right.
I feel like that week before Halloween.
Twenty eighth is over.
And I was gonna say, cause the thirtieth.
I was being.
Twenty first, but.
Monday the twenty.
I mean, I was thinking the twenty third, so.
I was looking at the twenty fifth, so we were pretty close.
But you can deal with the auditor to know. No, it'll be fine.
So the twenty eighth.
It's gonna be up to Dr. Ryan and the team. I'm.
I mean, it's our first look. If something's not.
Right, there's always like, you know, there's, we usually have like a one meeting and um, Alex will be here from the budget committee and with the admin and, and whatnot. And then we'll say, whoa, or great, or whatever.
I understand there's one big component that we haven't even gotten yet, that's health insurance.
Yeah.
Once I get that, it takes a little bit for me to roll through everybody's plans and I don't have those yet. I'm hoping that the sixth week will be the latest. And I also don't have Primex's um, Workman's Comp for property liability again to.
Well, even if we don't have those numbers.
Yeah.
If we have them by the twenty eighth, we can start.
Really, I do not have those. Twenty five percent increase last year was what? Four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Budget increase. So I, I just repeat to tell board, but I mean, I will meet your deadline.
So the twenty eighth?
It works for me.
Well, it's known, it's estimated if I don't have that number because, you know, to, when I say estimated.
Yes.
Guys, it's right. Other members of someone.
Right.
Um, it's estimated.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be plenty of other things we're gonna have to go through anyway, so.
Is this gonna be a meeting or is this just when you guys are gonna receive it?
That's up to everybody who wants to do it.
I think that if we receive it, if we wanna have a meeting.
And we can have a meeting the first month, week of November.
Us have a meeting and be able to go over our own concerns so we can be more prepared rather than necessarily each day against each other.
Yeah, then it can be a more productive meeting with administrators.
I think if we can get it by the twenty eighth and then we meet the first week of November, then that would be good. If that works for you guys.
So are we gonna get it the twenty?
I think, I think, I think we should get it, have a look at it, and we should be able to all meet with the admin and everybody at the first week of November. That's my expectation. That works.
We will receive it kind of as you did last year where any increases or decreases that are fifteen hundred or more will have the explanation right up front on your budget page to help you with any questions that you may have.
And I, I want it printed rather than emailed.
Can we?
Sorry.
I'd like to have it in a binder for you.
Yeah, okay.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I would like it printed too.
Can I just, I'll clarify what you just said. We're gonna get to twenty eighth and you're saying you would like to have a meeting with the administration on the first week of November?
Yes.
So are we?
When are we gonna have a meeting?
That would be the meeting.
That would be all of us.
That would be the meeting.
I was saying, we should have a school board only meeting for us to go over what we see and how we feel before we go back to them.
That's basically what we'd be doing now. And because then if we have the questions, the admin are here to answer it. Jane's here to answer it. They're all here to answer it. And then we can, and then they know, and then they can have expectations moving forward for the next meeting after that. Do you know what I mean?
I understand what you mean. I want a meeting with just the school board before we have a meeting with the administration.
To the week in between.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So if we did, so let's go back to the twenty eighth and said that, can we do a five o'clock? Would that work on that day for everybody?
Twenty eight, that's all.
Yeah. Well, the twenty eighth actually is just we're getting it, right? So we don't actually have a meeting time for the twenty eighth. Yeah, okay, nevermind. Getting budget. Thank you. And then next week.
Um. Jane, so by four o'clock, Jane, if we, if we're, if we're, if I'm getting it printed, can I come by four o'clock?
My hope would have, you know, I'm not doing much of it come Monday.
Okay.
But you're gonna come in this room and look at it together on the twenty eighth, yes?
I mean, we could, but we, I'd like to just bring it home, go through it and then come back with, if we wanna meet with just the board.
Okay. So let's want to meet.
So do we wanna meet on the fourth?
I think the fourth would be good and then we build a.
They give us a week to look it over.
We to, give us a week to over and they give us some, some time to talk and then we'll be back to the thirteenth. And we'll be able to come up with an idea when we can meet.
So you don't wanna meet with administrators before our school board meeting?
Well, we can do that too. I'm.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
We could.
There's my thought processes. I mean, we could, I was thinking if we met the fourth, then maybe the like later in that week, we can meet with administrators.
Um, can I ask the longer process that may help you up a little bit in answering some questions? Previous districts, what we've done is we have created a portal or shared document that either board in or budget members can go into and they can say, we're looking at this line, this number, can someone explain this? Sometimes that kinda helps because what will typically happen is either I would answer it for Dr. Brian or whichever administrator is overseeing that part of the budget. So that some of those questions can be answered ahead of time. It's shared so that everybody can see it. And I don't know if that. Just kinda gives you.
That'd be like a Teams folder type thing?
Yeah, it gives you a conduit so that, you know, we can go in and, you know, because sometimes it's hard to pull everything together at a meeting and be able to answer. And, and I would like to be able to either have answers already there or at least generate directions. So we're pulling those answers. So we have them. Because you will have had a, you know, a week to read it. And if something comes up and you're confused, I don't want you to just stop and yell, well, all right, I'm gonna just have to wait till after. Sometimes having that shared doc can kinda keep you going and it might even generate more questions that we haven't considered too.
Yeah, Maria wants to set up the Teams folder for budget.
Is that okay with everybody?
It's okay with me. Should okay with you guys. I mean, it's fine. It would be helpful.
I hate Teams, so I can't promise all.
I'm used to Google.
I love Google.
I don't know. I don't, I'm getting used to Teams now, so I have no idea what Google is. Okay, so on the fourth, what time do we wanna meet?
This is the budget review, right?
This is the board.
Board, yeah. Mondays are open for me.
And do you wanna do five or do you wanna meet later? It's up to you guys.
Whatever's convenient for the rest of the board.
I'm wide open. Work for you, Kendra.
I mean, like five fifteen, so I can go home and like get my.
You wanna say by thirty?
Can we do five thirty, please?
Yeah, we can say five thirty.
Quarter increments.
Well, I'm just trending.
Yes.
Are you gonna want me here?
Yes.
You got?
I don't think we can have a meeting without you anyway. We need somebody.
Well, yeah.
Tag it unless it's not public.
Deal the next time.
Yeah.
No, I'm happy to be here.
And then the school board's the thirteenth.
Do you wanna meet with admin later in that week?
I know.
I don't wanna do it separate from the, I'd rather do it separate from the.
From the actual meeting, yeah. It's.
Just cause it's gonna take up time, I assume.
Yeah.
Before our school board meeting.
Right.
Right, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm looking at the seventh. I don't know if that works for everybody.
We have conferences.
Oh, is that, is that conferences that week? Oh, yeah, because it's November, right?
And there's no school.
No school, because of the election.
Yeah.
Could we?
I mean, I'm, I'm open Wednesday too, but then.
I was gonna say.
You guys got a lot going on that week.
We just got rid of three committees.
We did. I'm talking about those guys.
There's a high school sports banquet, so I don't know if that.
What day is that?
Wednesday.
Okay.
Is that for soccer?
Six, yeah.
Oh, wait, what, what did you say?
I don't know about that yet.
The six.
Yeah, I was gonna say, same.
Middle school? Middle school's Monday.
Middle school's the fourth?
Time.
Sorry. Six.
Okay, so that's gonna have to be speedy on Monday because we have.
Yeah, but the. Sophia.
Okay, so we have to do five.
Banquet.
On Monday.
Yeah, because we have to be done by six.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay, but then I have to bring my kids and they have to be annoying. All right.
Your kids are graceful. Sit here quietly.
Okay, hold on. So November fourth, the school budget review is at five we're going with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so my question then is.
Five P M. Done. Okay. And then what did we just say for that other one?
Well, the high school, there's so much going on that week.
If we met, I mean, Monday's Veterans Day, Tuesday, the twelfth.
Is the high school soccer banquet at six also on?
I'm imagining it is.
Could we meet the thirteenth at?
Four thirty?
I mean, I can't.
Oh, that's gonna be such a long day.
Yeah.
Going over the budget hurts my brain.
Cause we can't do it the, we can't do it the eighth?
I mean, I can do it the eighth.
About conferences during the day.
But.
And there's no schools. That's right. There's no school.
Was there, um, because we usually have faculty meeting on Tuesdays, but we'll have an in-service all day. Um, is there early, like semi-after school on Tuesday?
Tuesday the twelfth or the twelfth?
Okay. Oh.
Um, just because we know we'll all be here because we'll be in service all day. I don't know about you guys, though.
I mean, I'm.
Cause that's clear. You said you have middle school day, but later.
Monday.
Oh, Monday.
Monday. That's the day right in between, so that.
Wayne, could you come right from work?
What time is that?
He gets out at four.
When you get out earlier.
I'm gonna say cause three thirty would probably be better for you guys, right?
Use it.
Whatever, just do four, four would be fine.
Whatever works.
So four. And that gets us home to our own. Do our voting.
Yeah. So four o'clock, that, does that work for everybody? Dr. Ryan?
I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Talking about election day, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I will take care of voting in the morning.
Okay, so. At four.
Okay, so the fifth at four?
I'm waiting on my calendar to do when I go.
Yeah. Well, I'm just like, remembering what's going on.
Okay, so.
Okay.
School board budget review on the fourth.
Yeah, and then Tuesday.
School board admin budget review on the fifth at four. Okay.
Okay. All right. That was painful. We got there.
Yep.
Yes, regular meeting on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Right? If I had an extra room, but I don't.
Kayla has two houses.
Well, there you go.
So do we.
Yeah, that's true.
Good house. And then, Roy, you're fine with creating a Teams and putting us all in there?
Yes, and then you.
Yeah.
Example for you. And that way, you know, that way, because if you go with a specific one, to show you how to do that.
That would be helpful.
Little instructions are good.
I know, love instruction.
And if not, we won't do it again, but.
Worth a shot. Okay. I'm also, so on a separate note, wondering if we can get so in my housekeeping for my computer, I would like to get the financial report separate from the packet so I can put it into a folder separate from the packet. I get it with the packet, that's fine.
It has its own attachment.
Yeah, an attachment, kinda like we do with the staff hand. Yeah, an attachment, kind of like we do with the staff handbook or whatever we have with this one, you know? I don't know if anybody else cares, but.
Could we take it out of the packet?
Because it's like.
Because there's so much scrolling to get to anything else.
That's what I'm saying. Take it out of the packet and have its own attachment because, yeah, that was my other thought process was like scrolling to get to the next report.
Guys, we're not used to this in case you.
We're working through it. All right, any other questions for Jade? All right, thank you, Jane.
You're welcome. Thank you for giving us a time.
Yes. Then Director of Academics.
Madame Chair, you have my report. A few things that I. But I wanted to add that. We're starting a program with Applewood and our kindergarten and the Dr. Grant here program.
Oh, I love that.
Which is gonna get our kindergarten moves down to Applewood and maybe some of Applewood people to school, just a really nice community connection for us. And Applewood reached out and it's been great enough to give us some, let me have some time with the teachers to bring Applewood here, figure out the details of it all and how that's gonna work. So we'll be, I don't know what it's gonna look like yet, but they're trying to get that. And the posting association called us and we're excited to start working with their genetics department. Through our science program here, so it's just gonna be a nice way for our, Ms. Jarrettella is hoping that when she does her whole genetics unit, that some of the classes can actually take place. Association, she does effects of humans, the genetics of cows, all kinds of overlap. So they opened up their doors to us in a big way and offered opportunities throughout their whole building, IT. HR, genetic testing. There's, there's just many different opportunities for us, so and really trying to get our kids involved, however they can help us with.
Cool, that's very cool.
So I think they try to help those positions happen. Especially in the rest of our report, we're excited to start the design, make the design challenge that will happen April fourth. Dr. Ryan reminded me of the date, but Dr. Ryan was from Illinois that. From U N H to talk to us about how we make that work. So our students will be participating in the Sharp. In, in April. And then I, I'm really excited about our student agency experience where we're sending nine kids will be going to Concord. To meet with other schools. What was really exciting about that is when it's presented to ninth and tenth graders, we watched shows. And within literally within five minutes, we had nine kids. I actually had to transfer the kids away because I wanted to take them as small group. So for students to be able to really talk about what they think is important in our district and they're going to have to develop a project or something to bring back to the school and implement before the end of the year. So at the end of next year, it's a two-year program. So they'll be going. Meet with other schools three times this year, three times next year and working on their projects and getting feedback from other districts. So it's gonna be exciting.
That's cool. I'd love to see him do a presentation in the board. Of their ideas. That would be, because I'm interested to see what they come up with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, I also would love to see the changemaker stuff that we get a chance for that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll put the invite out to the whole board to come watch competition.
Yeah.
And so we'll pick judges from, judges that, that Karen recruiting will. Pick, what did we say, two or three?
They'll pick three.
That go to U N H for the statewide, which is, we went last year and it was unbelievable. Our, our, instead of standing up against the likes of Philip Sandover, Brewster, you know, just prep schools.
Yeah.
Oyster River, just really well-resourced schools and they held their own, one of our teams took third.
Nice.
Yeah, it was fun and kids opened, they opened their eyes.
Yeah.
So.
That's cool.
Yeah. Thanks to Karen for organizing.
I would like to say congratulations to the age four age student. I mean, that's kind of exciting too to get that maybe going.
That has been really interesting this year to see. I can see how little schoolers wanting to participate in ELOs. I think some of it has to do with what Ms. Dorian last year did. Be able and kids learned about career exploration.
Yeah.
But the exciting thing is they're coming and they're asking, can they get credit for things that are happening outside of school? So that's kind of cool. It's, and the student will be bringing this cow to school. We can make it happen for the third of the competitors. And honestly, I can live with this experience when it was really changed his school experience or four ages changed his school experience. So we're trying to elevate that a bit and get more kids involved with that.
Yeah, that would be cool. Thank you. Any other, any questions for Karen?
A lot of exciting stuff.
I know, I'm super excited. Do you know about how many ELO students we have now? You said it.
About twenty-three. That's with some kids that aren't doing full-blown. Some are just doing, they're younger kids, so they're doing some part-time.
Yeah.
More like job shadow, if you said, that will morph into something bigger, moving around twenty-four students. With still about four left to be placed. Everybody knows construction, so anybody that's. If you have names, send me that when you're at a construction student. I'm really struggling with getting somebody out there. Were you already using?
Laying construction, isn't that in Northfield?
Oh, is it just paving?
Yeah, it's not laying anymore. It's not used.
Really?
Yes, we, we looked at that already, but we're, we're, they were away. So anyways, one, but I mean, we do have a couple of students already placed with some construction people already. So our sites that we use are full.
Okay. Great.
I'm, I'm bullying.
He's working, going to raise a weight.
He is.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
All right, any other questions for you? We'll have to get you some names. All right, thank you very much, Karen. Principals report.
First, sure, Chair, Members of the Board, you have my report. A lot of it has already been discussed, so I'm gonna riff a little bit with some other highlights. I did put the bravely stuff in there and we'll just point out, I put in our question, but then we had a meeting and we are refining our question. So it's similar to that, but we were just trying to, we felt like this question was really big and broad, so we were trying to focus it a little bit. To focus our work more, but that's, it's really exciting to think about. The interest in that group of bringing more student agency to their learning, to the middle school. So I'm excited about that work. We, and then also the, we've been talking about the AP stuff a lot and part of that is that we've seen a lot of growth in AP enrollment here. This year we have twenty-seven students taking AP classes. Last year there were two, so.
Wow. That's a huge jump.
Bubble. And then the World AP Network, I'll be attending a meeting virtually later in the month to meet with the other folks about courses that everyone can offer. And David and I had talked about offering AP French, because no one else on the collaborative is gonna offer that and we have a teacher who can do it. And.
AP Lit, Karen Robinson.
Yes, AP Lit, which Karen Robinson is. Ready to do. So that will be some interesting work. I have the disciplinary data in there. I will say. That we've been working on uploading. We started the year with the old system, so we've been working on uploading everything into the new system, which allows us to look at the data in a different way. And I rolled it out with the teachers yesterday, so that's been positive. We also had our NEOS visit and I don't know if, if you guys are familiar with the NEOS process, it's a ten, every ten-year process. And the old process was a lot, a lot, a lot of work, boxes and boxes of data collection. And our liaison made it really clear to everybody that it's not gonna be like that anymore. It's a much more productive, generative process. And I checked in with folks about that yesterday and they're feeling better about it. And I got lots of volunteers to help with the writing of the report, so that's exciting. And I think it's gonna align really well with the strategic planning because it's about assessing where we are now and where we want to go. So that'll be good work. Supervision and evaluation is underway. Mr. Ponce and I have started doing formal observations for those who are doing that. And you're aware that Julian Perzian transitioned back into the classroom, so now we have the opening for library media specialists back up. And then I will just, this isn't in my report, but make you aware that I also will be away the twenty-second and twenty-third for professional development. It's something that I started last year and this is the last round of it. It's in collaboration with the Center for Creative Leadership out of North Carolina, but this one is in Vermont and it's a focus on strategic leadership. So it's really, it's a, a program that is for Vermont principals that they let me finish and David gave me the go-ahead to, to finish as well. But for principals specifically and focusing on developing their leadership. So it's been really good professional development and I'm looking forward to it. And I will take any questions.
I love the ways that we're like empowering students to get involved with their education and many, you know, things you've heard just tonight, anyway, you know what I mean? So I'm loving that. Anybody have any questions?
Oh, I have a comment on like the opportunity here is I only do two classes in his, like, in, I come in first and fifth because I was able to do a bunch of V-Lax, which I feel like isn't utilized here. So I'm doing six, I think six courses on V-Lax and then I get my ELO too.
Oh, wow.
That's a heavy load you've got.
I know.
But it's easy because it's flexible.
Yeah.
You get ten thirty at night and you get, you can learn how like kind of you want to. So if you don't want to do anything at eight thirty in the morning, well, I'm here, but. Morning, but at eleven thirty, you can't sleep. I can hop on and I can do three or four courses.
Yeah.
I would agree with you, Kayla. I think we could do a better job at making students aware of what their options are for learning and what the different pathways are that are available to them. And I, I'm still learning all the time new, you know, things that kids here can do, so. I'll definitely be interested to hear if you have ideas about how we can better, better put that information out to students.
And they have AP classes on there too that we don't offer, so that's also another avenue.
Yep.
We do have to pay for those, though. You have to pay for the actual course and I think the test.
See, I didn't get a bill for anything.
You didn't?
It's probably coming. Oh, I bet it is coming because we actually have that meeting next week. That's fun. Thank you for that, Kayla.
She's full of info for you.
Well, Mr. Pong sat me down and was like, hey, you can do this, 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 and this, and this is your college courses and. Yeah, I ended up calling a bunch of people, but I missed the deadline for all my college courses this semester.
Wow.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? Thank you.
I like your graph.
Spurmer, Dr. Spurmer.
Your chart.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, you have my report. So now I'll highlight the PTA. I'm doing some great work over with us. Please come to our ice cream social next week. And since writing this, we found out rapidly when pumpkins arrived. On Monday, our pumpkin carving is tomorrow night. So, so the, so we have a hundred pumpkins. So it's not enough for every student, but I guess in years past, there's been a surplus of unused pumpkins. So.
Yes, I do.
So if you feel like putting your hands in pumpkin guts, come on over at five tomorrow. And so that was an update there. Our assessments, we expanded some of our screenings and assessments so that we have more robust and detailed data, typically and reading data and literacy data. So the supplemental screenings have all been completed and data uploaded. This week, folks are finishing their N W B A testing and into next week. And then we, through Title Grant. Really made a step to help teachers be able to collect dibble status and dibbles is our fluency or reading fluency. A few other things, but it's the focus. It had all been hand scored, which took hours and hours and hours and hours and hours. And so we worked with Genie to include subscription to M class, which that they take it and it's sourced all at the same time. So trying to free up time for data analysis instead of data inputting. So, so our assessments are, we're, I would say maybe now as of today halfway through. Trying not to overload students and make sure balancing and instruction. I included attendance data because this is a big piece that we have been focusing on. This was a, a piece of data that I instantly knew we needed to work on this summer. And so. A month into the school year, I think about twenty-five percent of our students have perfect attendance, so seventy-five percent of our students have missed at least one day of school already. And so we're working to continue to improve that. You know that the handbook was rewritten and now we're reaching out to folks and just trying to add clarity. And I think, you know, some of it is, you know, the, when, when COVID happened, it was a sniffle, ten days, right? Like, so, and so I think we're still, so I'm working with Nurse Franklin to better. But get out information that like, yes, we don't want to share germs, but. We, we can't be absent this much either. So. And so, yeah, I wanted to include that. I wasn't aware that we needed to do that level of. Orderly information. I knew the bullying piece, so I just included that. We, we had. I'm two investigations since I've started. One was the summer, one is current. We've done our drills. I'm still hiring some positions. Don't know if there's any other.
Maybe I have anything for.
Um, I do. Out of the. Absences, do you mark it down like how many were sent home and not allowed to come back the following day due to the illness?
Um, so those, that would be split between our, our excused and unexcused, which I didn't break down here. So on our end, we're analyzing those details, but it's not many. We have had some stomach things. So we had a few folks. Lose nutrition during the school day and take a day off the next day. So that definitely has been the last couple of weeks. That's a known quantity, but we haven't had too much illness. I, I think you guys actually had more of the, you can't come back for a day or two than we had on that.
Okay.
So ours have been stomach.
That was, that was a good way of saying it. I like that.
Yeah.
I don't think I've ever made it so delicately.
How long are we going to, I know the plan was to have the third, fifth grade teacher. But at what point do we abort mission on that completely and just say, who do we pick to go to the other class? Or do we just keep these classes together? And obviously we have an extra substitute pair professional and they're helping with the, the larger classes. I mean, it's the, would it be, I feel like it would be very disruptive in the middle of the year to be like, oh, we got a fifth grade teacher and now we're gonna. Blow up these two classes to make them smaller.
Um, my understanding was that a change in that process was a board decision if we were to not hire for that position when we had that discussion last time, so.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about when the mid-year, all of a sudden, new teacher, different classmates. Who gets to stay with their happy homes and who gets to go to the new teacher is more or less, it's just, I'm asking. If you say we're gonna continue trying to hire, then that's the route we're going and that's fine. I'm just, I'm just wondering because of how disruptive it'll be come holidays or January or whatever.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we can address, I'm not comfortable addressing that in public because I have some non-public information relative to staffing. That. Then you'd want to stick around for two months.
Cool.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much. Uh, Justin, IT Director.
I'm sure you have my report. Answer any question.
Get there. I don't think I had any. Did anybody have any questions? Did you manage to get through all of those? That's so many tickets.
We have thirty-five today that are open with about half of those just pending payments for broken laptops or waiting on parts or just other.
That's pretty impressive. Wow, that's pretty good. I know, right? Yeah. Yeah, that seems like a lot. Thank you for all your work with getting the testing and stuff, but that's always helpful. Anything else for Justin? Anybody?
No, I think all the new technology stuff sounds exciting and needed.
Thank you, Justin. And then we have our new facilities director with his first report. How would you, you like Nathan, Nate?
Nate's fine, yeah. Madam Chair and members of board, you have my report. Do you guys have any questions?
It's short and sweet.
Yes.
I know, I didn't write down.
I wrote it out, and I'm not the greatest at writing. I'm like, look, that's like, this is very, a lot of redundancy in here. Maybe we can chop this down a little bit, so I try to keep it short and sweet for you guys. You guys are welcome to bring as much as you want.
I tried, it didn't work.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
I did have a question. I didn't write it down. Now I don't remember what I said. Oh, I thought, no. Maybe I answered it, and that's why I didn't write it down.
Have you been getting any applications for your open positions?
Yeah, we have been. We actually are hiring on Tuesday. We're starting a new full-time evening custodian. So I'm actually very pleased with that, just, we've been, our guys have been working very hard with the evening. You know, we, we actually hired a part-timer. He's a student, and he's actually come in and we're working around some driver's ed stuff and some school stuff. We're working with him to make sure that, you know, he's getting his, his school stuff done. But same time, you can come in, work with us and make improvements there. And then our full-timer is starting on Tuesday. And I'm just happy we're actually starting to put together some numbers because, you know, we, we've been down some guys. I've sent out some emails for, you know, just excusing certain things because we just, just don't have enough people. I mean, it's, we're building, we're working on it, though, we're getting there. We've been able to manage, and, you know, my guy's been working really hard. So I appreciate them a lot for that.
Yeah.
I can help when I can, but they've been really doing a great job, so.
But yeah, we're, we're, we're making progress, which I'm happy about.
Great. Well, thank you for all your work.
Yeah, that's great. You're notifying them to like, hey, we know this.
Yeah, and I've been trying, I've been trying to, you know, put that out there so that people do know that, you know, I, I see it. Like, I'm not ignoring things or I'm, you know, I, I do see them and I'm very acknowledge that, so people do know that.
Yeah, that's great. That's very good. Uh, is the student that we hired, is that a student here?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, that's amazing. That's great.
I did, oops. I did hear that you had some productive conversations with Bob and for getting salt from the town.
Yes.
Rather than buying it through smaller amounts with higher prices and the cardboard. Sounds like it's gonna work out good, too.
Yeah, we're working towards that. I mean, it's not, it's not a hundred percent there yet, but we are.
No, but the, the step in the right direction for sure.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, it's, so far, we're trying to build that relationship with the town so that we can work together to make things ultimately like, or streamlined and cheaper for both of us. So far, taking it baby steps, one thing at a time, but we are getting, we're making progress.
It'll make taxpayers happy, too.
Awesome.
Any other questions for me? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. New board business. We have to approve the staff handbook that we didn't approve last month. So I just need a motion for that.
We're not doing anything.
We, we had, we had it in our, we had it in last month. We just looked at it. We were fine with it. We just need, we just didn't, we didn't actually vote on it, so we need to actually vote on it to accept it as a handbook. So I just need a motion.
I'll make the motion, too.
Second, anybody?
Oh, second.
I was gonna say Kendra. Any discussion on it? No? All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? So, okay, that was like a housekeeping, yes, thank you, housekeeping item. Superintendent goals for twenty-four, twenty-five? Anybody have any questions for Dr. Ryan on those? They all looked good to me. So we just need a motion to approve those goals for the superintendent this year.
I will make a motion to approve Dr. Ryan's goals.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? So moved. The MOU, if it's okay, I'd like to talk about in non-public, and then we can come out of vote to approve it or not, if that's okay with everybody. I just have some questions that I know are non-public-ish. S A U twenty-nine manual.
We sent that under separate cover. That's the proceeding, point procedures manual. There's nothing in there that would prevent it from being a public document, so that can be discussed.
Yeah. My question was under, I had to write it down somewhere. Like, coaches need to be CPA, CPA, not CPAs. Nope, they need to be CPR certified, but I didn't see that in the, in that part of the handbook. Like, listed as a, in the checklist, I think maybe the checklist. I would, I was supposed to write it down, but I remembered off the top of my head, but I can't remember. Page forty-eight. This coaches, I know coaches need to be CPR certified because there are one person on the, it's follow that RSA or that policy. There are, there are one person on the, on the ground that CPR certified to satisfy that, but I didn't see it on the checklist.
As far as making sure we have that.
Right, yeah, making sure we have that certificate on file for them. I know Sam generally tries to do a class or something before the season starts or something, but I know that he had sent out an email that he wasn't able to do a class this year, so, and he sent out an online way to do it. So I just wanted to, I didn't see it on the checklist, so. That was my only comment on the whole thing, which I did see.
Well, and a good catch.
Yeah, catch, thank you.
We do, we are going to have an easier way of getting CPR certified rescue captain on fire department is in its instructor license.
Oh, great.
So that'll be a local, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
No, that'd be nice to open up to a district.
Hmm. Sweet.
He asked me to mention it.
Great.
Uh, Jeff Frizzle. He's a Frizzle.
Exactly, that was said.
That's my favorite teacher.
That's her son.
Great, that's awesome. I know, half the problem is finding somebody to do.
Yeah, the classes are booked out. It'd be nice to have it in the district and in the town, kind of at our disposal, obviously, it's scheduled, but.
Right, yes. Perfect, that's awesome. Um, any questions? First, let's do the motion to, this is, is this a first reading of it, or this is the? S A U manual?
This is the manual.
This is it, okay.
The one that we've worked on, it seems like.
Right, yes, it does. So we just need a motion to approve the manual. As is.
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the manual.
Second, is there any more discussion on it? No? Somebody has anything? All those, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? So moved. That was a final. Great. Then was there any other business for the board? Okay. So other than Dr. Brenner, does we need anybody else for this day?
Not for non-public.
Does anybody need anybody for reports before they leave? No, I can cross. So we can dismiss everybody but Jane and Dr. Brenner. She's like, I know better by now. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Yes. No, 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 we're gonna, we're going into committee reports, and then we have a citizens, and then, and then we'll go in. No, no, we got one more coming. No, yeah, you're good.
You are so welcome to stay.
Yeah, if you want.
She's like, I would love to, however.
You're just like.
I must, I must go.
Committee reports and stuff don't usually feed everybody here. All right, so we don't need to speak on the behavioral support team. So the next committee would be budget committee. So we have a meeting set for the sixteenth for the budget committee. I assume at that meeting, we'll be talking about the fire department stuff still. We did give them the end of year report for the school at our last meeting, along with some information. So they have that. I'm not sure anything will be talking about that or not, or, I don't have an agenda, so I don't really know what the meeting is, will be. The sixteenth is the budget committee. So they generally will meet on the, let me go back to October, the third Wednesday of every month. So that's our scheduled meeting. I thought they were gonna have a meeting last week, and they did not. I showed up for it and nobody was there, so.
I love.
So that was fun.
For us, not for them.
So, uh, so there's that, but I made it to bingo, so that was nice.
I was so mad I was busy, I'm gonna make they did bingo.
Um, but yeah, so the, yeah, so the budget committee will be meeting on the sixteenth, and I'll have more information next month from that, I'm sure. Community connections, we're posting, we're posting job openings, we're posting schedule, yeah, yeah, whatever. Yeah, so we're. I am, yes. Yeah, it took me a minute the first time I got it because there was like no description on it whatsoever, and I was like, okay, there's a link. I don't really want to touch it.
Right.
But then I was like, okay, and then I, so then I asked, and I was like, okay, this is the report, so.
Yeah, it's like smores, I was like, so many links.
And then I realized Anna's was from smores. And I was like, okay, that's probably, yeah. So I know it's from you now. So thank you for that. Facilities and maintenance.
That's you, Seth.
That's you.
Yes. So I spoke with Nate.
Yeah.
We spoke a lot, me and Nate and Jane, we had a weird meeting because everyone was late and chaos was happening inside in town. I was on two different medical calls at the same time. But we got a, we got a, got a long ways with the conversation, with opening up the conversation with Bob and trying to streamline some things to try to, you know, with us doing the parking lot, fixing the catch basin, it made it a lot cheaper, made it a lot more beneficial for us. Bill come up, rather than having a contractor come in and take care of it. Those, those conversations are gonna be able to be had, they might not always work, though. I mean, if the, the timing doesn't work out, then that's the tough part. But Nate and Bob, they seem to be working very well together. I was excited when Bob came in and said, they heard your message, Lynn. I said, oh, so you had, you had a conversation. So, yeah, it's gonna be good. The cardboard is, when that gets up and running, it'll be, go from an expense to a revenue. So, yeah, you know, so that's, that's just, I mean, they're little steps, but, you know, that's how you get somewhere, little steps at a time.
A hundred dollars a year.
Nice.
Of expense.
That's how we figure out how to be sustainable.
Right.
So I know I'm very, I was very happy with the meeting. It was, it was good to hear Nate's got a lot going on. But I think he's doing a good job and very open-minded to ideas, and he's looking at it the same way the rest of us are.
Great. Uh, HASP, you guys just had a meeting, right?
Yeah, we did, we just met right before. Uh, it's going really great. They've updated their handbook. They have quite a bit of teachers stepping up to supply more club options for the students. The elementary school has a hundred and fourteen enrolled and almost twelve on their waitlist. They have seventeen staff members, but could use some more. And two interns. Yep, and two interns. The middle school has eighty-nine enrolled with twelve staff. And they are offering sixteen different enrichment programs this year, so that's great.
Nice.
Mary Ann's keeping it moving right along as smooth as possible. I know it probably doesn't feel like it to her, but to the rest of us, it seems like there's no bumps. She does it so good, so. And there's so many clubs at the middle school level. I was shocked with eighty-nine, that's a big number for middle school. Usually, it's like, there have been some years, I think it was like thirteen.
Right.
You know, so to have eighty-nine, and it's just nice to see teachers stepping up and making clubs for things the kids are interested in. I think it's so great, too, it's like every meeting with Mary Ann, whether it's like for the HASP or like just out and about, like, she never seems to lose her excitement for the program, which I think is why it's been so successful for as long as it has because she is a hundred percent invested and is a child to her, so. It's great.
It really is. All right, great, legislation. So go back to my notes on that. So I'll be attending the delegate assembly on the nineteenth in Concord. I attended a webinar on fall policy updates in response to legislation, and I had Maria upload the handout from that meeting into the Teams folder for policy because it directly correlates with that stuff. The one policy that we'll need to talk about and really decide on is the girl's sports one, that directly correlates with with that new legislation. It was suggested by the New Hampshire SBA to consult a law, our, our lawyer on it and decide which way we want to go because the new legislation conflicts with, I guess, Title One or Title Nine. Thank you, Title Nine. So we need to decide what we're gonna do and what the legal ramifications of that would be. And it, either way, either way we go and whatnot. So there'll be more, lots of work to be done on that specific one. But, yeah, because there, in the legis, new legislation, there are legal ramifications of somebody feels slighted, basically, by you having a transgender girl on a, on a girl, a girl's team.
The way I thought that was going.
Yes.
So.
Yes, it's discriminatory and, yeah.
With Matt, because I know that the, the New Hampshire District Court, you have the federal district court.
Rule that that law is a constitutional and put a stay on it, as it gets more examination, which means that currently. Transgender athletes can participate on girls' teams, however, illegal.
Yeah.
Consult with Matt, definitely be in our best interest.
Yeah.
So that we have all our ducks in a row.
Yeah, cause depending on which way we go, there'll be policies that'll need to be made up and stuff, and there's a lot going on in that one legislation.
Is that gonna be policy committee or school?
Yeah, it would start with a policy committee, for sure, but yeah, I wanted to just bring it to your attention. Um, and there's other policies um that need to be updated per legislation and stuff like that, and that's all in the handout stuff that I had her upload into Teams. So, and I'm sure there'll be more of that coming in the December legislation update, so. I'll have her do that when I take that.
Trying to burn them out.
Yeah. So, that's going on with that, um, personnel committee. We had to cancel our last meeting, and we have negotiations on the twentieth, right?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, right? Make sure that's in my calendar.
You done in one meeting.
Oh, no, it's in my calendar, okay, the tenth, okay. Yeah, so tomorrow, we have negotiations. And then, um, and we'll be meeting beforehand, before we meet with the teacher, so. Policy.
Uh, I don't think we've had one, but I've been very absent.
I had asked us to move it with the bereavement that I had, I wasn't prepared.
Oh, that's right, that's right, it was canceled.
For policy.
I do remember Maria.
But we have one in November, Scott.
Okay, and when is that?
Yep.
Twenty-four.
The twenty-fourth is, is a Sunday. You know what, Maria likes it when I call her and ask her my schedule. October twenty-fourth.
That will have to, uh.
Am I typing it in?
Nope, we're gonna have to move that one.
Okay, but should I type it in, because what if you don't move it, what if something happens?
I have to, because I get back from Austin the night before, and then I'm having dental work done on that day.
No, you can show up for the policy meeting. All right, okay, so I'm not gonna put that in.
So TBD, unless you guys wanna figure it out now.
I'd love to be able to figure it out right now, if it's, if it's all right.
I have to use a wall calendar, or else I.
If it's not on my phone, it doesn't exist.
How's Tuesday the twenty-ninth at ten AM look?
Emmy's gonna be so mad.
Or I'm gonna just do back-to-back days for you.
Why?
I, the thirtieth, I have written down daycare.
Oh, yeah, cause Clayton has a doctor's appointment, okay, yep, I see that now.
Does that work?
Do you have an afternoon, do you have that afternoon?
Yeah, we can, we can do two thirty.
Yeah, that's okay.
Want to do two thirty on the twenty-ninth?
Sure, okay, so on the twenty-ninth.
Cause then we'll, we have personnel at four thirty.
Does that not work for you, did the ten o'clock better work for you?
After, afternoon is better, it's just, um, uh, two thirty, then I'm dismissal, and it's a Tuesday faculty meeting.
Okay, so never mind.
It's not gonna work, sorry.
Okay.
Unless it's just earlier that afternoon.
I can do like a one.
One would be fine to me, but.
On the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, sure, okay. So, policy. So, policy meeting one PM twenty-nine.
Perfect.
Okay.
I haven't signed up for it yet.
It's all good.
And then the twenty-fourth is canceled.
Thank you. Um, I thought just, we haven't, we had to cancel our last meeting, and we have one scheduled for, uh.
Whatever day that was.
Twenty-nine, that one.
All right. You guys will have a lot of luck. Good luck, good luck.
Thanks.
You're welcome, don't blame me. Select board.
You are so good, Maria.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was hoping to make that meeting, but I did not.
It's, it's, it's been, it's been interesting, um, I don't know, there's a lot of things that we can't talk about, because it just, they, the. Behavior was not appropriate, but.
Oh, really, is that spicy?
Yeah, it goes spicy, um, but, there was, uh, Senator Regardi.
Yeah.
She came down, and I caught that last bit of it, cause I was coming back from another fire call. She's working really hard at getting some more funding coming down this way, and our town was actually named in the group that she's pushing for, so. Uh, she's pushing for educational funding, she's pushing for more smaller town funding, and for whatever reason, we were one of these small towns down here that. Actually was named, that's why she came down.
That time they recognized past conference, right?
Yeah, the, um. There's a lot of stress out there right now, and there's gonna be a lot of vocalization, um, a lot of things, and I don't. I did not get the information that I wanted from certain people, so I could bring some more things up, because. Just, they, I can't speak to it without knowing exactly how it went, you know, and understanding it completely. But, um, I do intend on making the rest of them, because it can all involve me on the fire department. Me with the highway department, and me being there for this, so, but this season's usually pretty spicy, and it's, it's just even bigger.
I was gonna say, wow, and that's how we're starting. Fun, fun, can I only go up? Right, yeah. All right, thank you. Tuition exploratory committee, we're still waiting.
Yeah.
In hold pattern.
Chester's, the next step forward.
So the Winchester superintendent figures it out.
All right, and then wellness.
And we just.
Just got it.
I didn't know that's what she was talking about, somewhere in here, I actually already have the beating minutes typed up. Jane is on top of her stuff, um, we are. We've gone through and approved some. And there'll be stuff heading to the policy committee from us, and we're looking at. Those four letters and some arrangement.
Yes.
Yeah, we're just sort of reinstating policies, cause during COVID. School board got rid of policies, because things were changing every week, so we just went with the, um, guidance. From, oh my goodness.
CDC.
Thank you. CCC is not right, CDC, um, so, we don't really have any policies in place right now, so we're just going through them and. And we still have more to do. And the big wellness one is much easier to deal with now, cause we just did that. Yeah.
Great. Um, that brings us to citizens comments, does anybody in the room have anything to add today?
I just have one.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if the board understands the dire emergency substitute situation that we have. At the school, we as a high school, middle high school have one substitute, that's on the books that we can call. Today, we had six people out, zero substitutes, who's that person on vacation? It did not peruse our sub situation to drop the pay. We had one sub that came one day and said, as soon as they found out we're serving, I'm definitely not coming back. Other districts around us kept the pay the same or increased their pay. Keen increased theirs, and also offers a one thousand dollar side on bonus, my bonus, once you're there for fifty days. And I know I believe increased theirs to one fifty-five, so people took the COVID money and then increased it, we took the COVID money and dropped it. There was one day, we had seventeen teachers or staff members out in one day, it's incredibly. Uh, taxing, with all of us are trying to keep up the slack and covering for everybody, but that means that. I'm here at six o'clock in the morning doing my planning, so I can cover for my friends. Um, and I just want the board to be aware of that, I don't know how Erica comes to work every day, and with her post-it notes, and tries to do the sub book. Um, but it's putting everybody in a kind of, a crazy situation, I have no idea what it's like at the elementary school, I think there's maybe a couple more subs. But like I said, we have one, right now, that we can call, and that's a retired teacher, and she's also newly retired, and she probably wants to do some retirement. So, I, I just want the board to be aware of that, and I would really encourage you guys to find some money in the budget and fix it this year. Because I think it's, it's, it's really taxing on everybody.
So that.
Thank you for that.
Conversation during budget.
We haven't been fully staffed, even, even, still, any day yet.
Right.
But we do have more subs that are coming. To, to us, but, um, I know, I'm, I'm subbing regularly, which takes me right through this work. And other, other, all of it, everybody's hands on deck. Brenda was the art teacher this afternoon.
I wish you loved that.
She used to do arts and crafts, she tells me all that. So we're all, we're all chipping in, but I think you guys are having it worse than the middle high school.
When, really, it was that Friday with the seventeen, I took lunch alone. Sam was on the line serving, because every group was down to two employees, one on the register and one on the line. So what's more frightening, Sam on the line serving. And then I subbed two classes plus taught my own class on that, so, it's not, you know, it, we're all in it together, but.
That's not.
There's a heck of a lot of pressure that comes.
Yeah.
And so that's a conversation that we want, and we had that, we did talk about that today, we do have some, uh, recommended remedies for that. One that would involve, uh, our negotiations with the teachers, I mean, as well as some immediate relief. So, we have some talks.
Well, that's good, cause, oh, that's rough.
Yeah.
One sub is not, not even close to enough. Oh, man.
Anything else in-house? No, I don't have anybody online, so I think that concludes. Comments, thank you for that. And I need a motion to go into non-public. I'll make that motion. Roll call, yes.
Yes.
Yes. And non-public, thank you. Thank you, guys, thanks.